...meeting of the Tepicano County Council, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's start with the auditor's report.
Okay. In your packet, you'll see the financial statement, which we began 2019 with a general fund cash balance of $10,224,887.37, with projected miscellaneous revenue, the tax levy, the property tax are 99% thereof, and the circuit breakers, our total available is $58,639,082.37. We deduct the encumbrances of 2019 budget, the minimum balance, and add back our estimated unused 19 budget. Our beginning net balance at the end is $18,876,533.37. So far this year, the council has approved additional appropriations to the general fund of $165,543 in reductions of $84.57. And when we deduct the miscellaneous expenditures of $273.68, our balance available at the beginning of this meeting is $1,719,173.69. There are $16,300 of additional appropriations requested for this meeting. With the revenue, I don't think I really noted of anything that is really unusual. We've gone past the settlement time, but you can see that our taxes are 60% of our estimate, 58% of the way through the year, and that as time goes on, we won't be adding any property tax until December now. So that 60% is a little understated. The intergovernmental section, we are about 50% there. We will be receiving some money for riverboats coming up here very, very soon. Licenses and permits, you know, we're about where we should be, where you've got the billing permits and the food inspection sort of things. The charges for services, again, that is what all the departments are charging for the different things that they do, and we're in line there. So we get to the end, and we're at 60.0%, which is about where I think we should be, so we're okay in the revenue side. Looking at the fund balances, the general fund, Fund Number 1,000, we have an ending July cash balance of $11,266,000. So that is about what we would expect. 1181 is a plat book fund. Just note that that is money that is used by the auditors' office to maintain plat books, and we do some salaries out of there. One thing I wanted to note here was, starting July 1, the fee went from $5 per deed or per legal description on a recorded transfer to $10. So that money has gone up. So we do the 2020 budget, or we're going to put a few more things in there than what we have before. So that money, hopefully, will be building a little bit to be able to use to maintain the plat books. 2580 and 2581, I don't think I've mentioned those for a couple months, are court services funds, and they are sitting there, you know, fairly decently, not going up much, but $109,000 for the substance abuse, and the violence in community is $14,000. The violence in community, that's not one that we're actively adding new fees to, but those are still some delinquencies that is being paid and collected by the clerk's office. So we do have some money there. The $14,000, we're not spending anything out of there, so that will be something that we can address at some point in time when those have completely stopped on the collection side. 4710 is the health insurance fund. And again, we had a decent month, a decent for the way we've been doing things here, about $160,000 of added cash balance there. So we are just a shade under $8 million in the self-insurance fund, with, of course, the $3 million rainy day self-insurance. I don't think I had anything else. If there's any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Treasurers' report, Jennifer.
Good morning. For the month of July, interest earned was $228,469.75 on about $116 million. In the bank and investments, our average rate was 2.59%, which we've been holding at for quite a while. But then at the end of July, they did, the feds did decrease the rate a quarter percent. So we'll see those go down. Starting August 1, back down to about 2.35 is what we'll be getting for the rest of the year, unless there's another decrease, which they are kind of leaning towards as well. So where I expect that to end up for us for the end of this year, though, is still at an increase of over what I had budgeted for this year. Looking at it, a year ago, I did take into account the increase in December. But looking at why we may have had more interest earnings, there are several funds that the interest goes towards the general fund, so that have had higher balances all year. So overall, our balances have been up about $28 million, and about $13 million of that has attributed to general fund interest. So that would be the increase. So I revised my estimate from 1.14 to 1.3 million for general fund for this year. And then I provided Bob with some estimates for as you go into budgeting.
Questions?
On the Centure Bank, the jumbo, that's just not available yet, or?
We get it at the end when it matures.
Is there any public comment on the items on today's agenda? Hearing done. We'll move to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Basham, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
I might want to add in there real quickly. I think we did have one grant that before we would have done an appropriation, but it's one that came with an appropriation with it. So from last month's meeting, we have.
Yeah, you might explain that. If they come with a, give the council personally.
Yeah, the grants, if they come with an appropriation, the state has said that they would not take exception, which they wouldn't, like, write us up if we did not appropriate them. Now, I don't think we want to take that step, that we're not going to appropriate them, but then maybe we don't need to have the discussion if you really don't have a lot of authority to not even approve the appropriation as requested to start with. reimbursable grants, those are ones where, you know, you're spending the money, and then they're going to give you reimbursement. Those have to be appropriated, and other federal grants would not be. So we throw that into the consent agenda if it falls into the category of having the, basically, when you're getting the grant, they're telling you how to spend the money. So we're kind of saying, all right, well, I want the council to be aware of it, but we just threw it in consent instead of the regular voted-on agenda.
All right. So additional appropriations, Superior Court 4.
Mr. President, I ask that we review general.
Approve.
We approve appropriation for a general fund. I'm sorry, can you do it?
I'm just going to make it. Mr. President, I move to approve the Superior Court 4 general fund appropriation for $1,300 as presented.
Second.
A motion from Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Basham, to approve the general fund 1,000 appropriation for $1,300 for Superior Court. Any discussion? Hearing done. There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, hey, guys. So what was this for, just briefly?
Medical, wasn't it?
Medical supplies.
Health and medical professional.
Health and medical professional? Okay. I was just asking.
Yeah. Anything else? All right. There's a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. Prosecutor.
Wait a minute. Do the salary?
Well, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Prosecutor's salary, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in the prosecutor.
Good morning, and happy rainy Monday.
You have to make the motion first, yeah.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we hear, the 2019 salary statement for the prosecutor in the sum of $43,771.
That's a second.
They have a motion from Councilwoman Dolm, seconded by Councilwoman Basham, to approve the prosecutor's 2019 salary statement as presented, reflecting title changes and classification changes. Sir?
Yes. We went through the personnel committee, HR, and consultants, and reclassified three of the staff members from Secretary of Legal Assistant based upon job duties and qualifications.
So was this, was this part of the salary study, then, or separate from the salary? Okay.
I don't have access to salary study.
I see some nodding behind you, that not part of the salary study. But was there a change in the state in terms of how these positions were understood? Oh, okay.
Actually, with the changes in the software and everything, the duties of the employees were changing. And so now the secretaries were doing more of what the legal assistants do. So Pat worked on making that change and blending the two. It went to the consultants, and they agreed that they should all be at the same level as legal assistants.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Happy rainy Monday.
Yes.
Is it raining, though?
No, it was yesterday.
It was two sprinkles this morning.
Did it rain yesterday?
No, it was just.
That thoughtful has changed a moment. Anyway, Sheriff, please.
Mr. President, I move to approve the K-9 Support Fund 4012 appropriation for $5,000 from office supplies and $4,300 for other professional services.
Second. The motion by Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Underwood, to approve the K-9 Support Fund 4012 appropriation as requested. Sheriff?
Yeah, what this will do is that that new support fund we have, taking money, and it's got to go somewhere. Part of it has to go, it says office supplies, but that's how we pay for the food, for the dogs, and some more things like that. Other professional service, it's for the vet bills, and one of the K-9s we still owe some money for, but that's just where that money's going to go. I'd like to refer these to my Roland Winger notes. But he's sick. Sorry to hear he's sick.
Yeah, he hasn't here yet.
No, that's where those funds are going to go.
Okay. Any questions for the hearing?
This isn't related, but have we heard anything recently about the jail study? No? Yes? Maybe?
I have not.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That has nothing to do with dogs.
All right. Anything else to do with dogs?
Were they carried by the dogs, you know?
Please don't talk about dogs. We got beat up in the media overdoses.
Oh, yeah.
There's a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Tuvalu alternatives. Rebecca.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Safe Place Fund 9211 grant appropriation for $243 for utility services and $7,300 for other professional services as presented.
Second. They have a motion from Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Underwood, to approve the Safe Place Fund 9211 SF-20 grant appropriation as requested.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a grant for our safe place. As you know, there are safe place signs all over the community for you who, in the moment, cannot get to the police or have an issue that is not 911, quite to that emergent nature. And they can go into a safe place, and we have folks especially trained in those places to then call our on-call people to assist. So the funding here is for our on-call phone, and then the on-call rate at $20 per day for those consultations and availability.
Any questions? We have a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. Salary statement.
Mr. President, I move to approve the 2019 salary statement for Kerry Home 2, positions a youth development supervisor from PAT 2 to PAT 3 for $47,469, and a youth development supervisor to, title change to trainer for $41,861 as presented.
Second. They have a motion from Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Underwood, to approve the 2019 salary statement for Kerry Home, reflecting title changes, classification changes as requested. Any discussion? Questions?
In the past, we've had three youth development supervisors. We've changed that structure because of accreditation and new licensing requirements about educational requirements. And so now we'll have one youth development supervisor who went through the classification process in the personnel committee, and was recommended to move from a PAT 2 to a PAT 3. And then one of those youth development supervisors has already been changed in title, remained a PAT 2. And then the third one is requested to move to a title of trainer and stay at the PAT 2 level.
Any questions? In that case, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Coroner.
Mr. President, I move to approve the general fund appropriation from the coroner for $15,000 for institutional or medical expenses as presented.
Second.
They have a motion from Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Basham, to approve the general fund 1,000 appropriation for $15,000 as requested.
Thank you.
Mrs. Abel.
What this entails is that our expenses for body bags and saw, for instance, I just ordered a saw blade, a tiny little one, $130 for the Stryker saw. Stryker only cuts bone, it does not cut skin. So our supplies, they're just getting more expensive.
And this will hopefully cover you for the rest of the year?
I like that word, hopefully, yes.
I realize you can't estimate, you know, can't accurately predict.
The crystal ball is still out for repairs.
Are you requesting more for next fund in terms of dealing with, like, is this going to be an occurring expense for the next budget? Like, will we run out of money in that fund again?
I can't foresee that.
Okay.
I truly can't.
Yeah, this is part of the autopsy fund.
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of a floating amount that.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, for the office part.
Yes.
Yes, we can control that. For the autopsy, and you've been in our office.
Yes.
The autopsy suite, we try very hard to control the expenses, and sometimes they're out of control.
Yeah, and you can't, like, like Councilman Metzger was saying, you can't control what autopsies are going to be needed. I also, I wanted to bring up a small change. There's a typo here. Instead of coroner, it says corner. So we just want to fix that.
I didn't notice that. Thank you.
I just noticed it's just a, so we can have it reflected.
On the agenda. That's where she's talking.
What is it?
Instead of coroner, it says corner.
We're turning the corner now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, on the agenda.
Well, she's a corner on the corner.
I didn't want to put you in a corner.
I wouldn't want that job.
Any other questions for Donna?
Bob's just checking to see what her balance is right now. What will this do, then?
She's still got $17.
Okay.
$17?
So this will be $15,000, hopefully, for the rest of the year.
Oh, I certainly hope so.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing done. We have a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to approve the 2019 salary statement for the Health Department for $67,000. And so $67,007 for Administrator from Exec 1 to Exec 2 as presented.
Second. They have a motion from Councilwoman Stonebreaker, seconded by Councilwoman Underwood, to approve the 2019 Health Department salary statement as presented. Craig.
I was hoping I could be done, but I'm not. What, I've chosen to step down and become the chief of foods for the Health Department. So with this, went through the company Wagner, and then through the personnel committee, and so this is actually a reduction in salary for the new person. Who has so far not been named. So I am here. I agreed to stay on until the new person starts, so this is kind of an operation.
Any questions? They have a motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we accept the appropriation from the auditors' office for the ineligible homestead fund 1216 for the total amount of $81,600.
Second. They have a motion from Councilwoman Basham, seconded by Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the ineligible homestead fund 1216 appropriation as presented.
Yeah, this is, we have a requirement for all the counties that have 100,000 population or more, that we have to change our financial statements to a GAAP compliant. And GAAP is the Government Accepted Accounting Practices. And what that really is meaning, instead of us, which we, we in all counties have always had cash basis financial statements, so based on our actual expenditures, it's going to be more on the accrual basis. And so we have gone through and accepted some offers to help on the financial side. Baker Tilly is who we have decided to go with. The commissioners have accepted that. And it's quite pricey, especially the first year. And so this isn't something I'm going to be able to do on a regular basis, but the first year, we will pay for their services, which I believe is subtly around $60,000 in year one, to help with that, to put their records together for us. And then, over time, they will be showing us how to do it ourselves. So this is just the appropriation for professional services that we'd be able to pay for that first year of services.
So, Bob, will we be seeing it in both the cash basis and the GAAP basis? We'll be having, getting two budgets, basically, next year?
No, what we probably will be doing in all the other counties, because there's about a dozen of us that are in this boat, what we're going to do is just make the financial statements at the end of the year.
In GAAP?
In the GAAP compliant.
Okay.
So that's what just about everybody is doing. So you're not going to see any difference. But it does make it more attractive to the investors of our bonds. And we cannot, for the county's our size, we cannot issue bonds unless we have GAAP compliant financial statements. So that's kind of where we're at. And I think there's some benefit. Sometimes they were saying, well, you can get a better bond rating if you're a GAAP compliant. Why, don't think that's the case for us, but we're still required to do it, so.
Okay, so we'll have one for 2020 or for 2019?
It'll be the 20 financial statements. So what we're doing now is, they're going to be doing work to get the end of the 19 set up, so that we, because we have to obviously have a beginning balance before we can go through and do the 20 statements.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see what that looks like.
Yes, and fun.
Other questions? Hearing done. We have a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the salary statement from the auditors' office in a request up to $30 part-time for the accounting of the CPA.
Second. They have a motion by Councilwoman Basham, seconded by Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the 2019 auditor's salary statement as presented. Questions? Comments?
And this is kind of a continuation on the GAAP compliant. There's Janet Mann, who has worked for me when I was auditor before, and she worked for Jennifer a little bit while she was auditor, and I've talked to her, and she's willing to help us out, because the more that we can have her do at $30 an hour is going to be saving, because it's on, obviously, an hourly basis for Baker Tilly to help us. So what I'm hoping to have her work, just a little bit of time, to be able to get some of the records put together so that we can all learn together. And she obviously has more expertise in this sort of situation, what we do. So that's what I'm trying to do with this.
Other questions? There's a motion on the floor. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. Are there any committee reports?
Yeah, and we got about 15 more homes to hook up in Romney. When we first put our blueprints together, it was told to us that we have to spend $80,000 for privacy barriers and landscaping, and who's going to maintain that. And I came down and I talked to Area Plan Commission, and they, it was waived because of being a utility. So we picked up $80,000 towards our budget, which in turn, I came down and applied for a building permit. We're building a lab south of Romney, which will be needed, especially in the wintertime, and a building that we can park some trucks in. So that was a great help from Area Plan that we're able to get that lab going, and people can get out of the weather, get their samples, and do their reports to the state.
Very good.
That'll be on South Romney at 1200.
All right. Any other reports?
So at the ordinance, the APC ordinance committee, I think maybe some of you may have read that in the paper, they are looking at a solar ordinance, how to do solar power in the county. So that'll be an ongoing discussion in the APC ordinance committee. And I imagine it will come to the full APC when they're done.
Is there a timeline on that, or just as it happens?
Not that I'm aware of.
So there's, all right. Any other reports? Under unfinished business, would remind everyone, 2020 budget hearings will begin at 8:30 a.m. on August the 27th. And our evening public hearing is on September 5 at 6 p.m. Both events in this room. We have on record the sheriff's financial plan, or is that the?
The commissary report, we receive that from the sheriff semi-annually. We receive the commissary report. And statute says that it's given to the fiscal body. You don't really even have to act on it, or, but it's just given to you. Our intention was to get that emailed to you before this meeting. That didn't happen. Kind of busy on the budget stuff, but somehow that got past us. Anyway, we'll get that sent to you fairly quickly and for you to just review it. And there's no action you have to take. You can accept it if you want, but I don't think you have to do anything.
And I assume that's a public document?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Anything else? I have one more thing than anything else. There has been some discussion among several folks, including representatives from Lafayette and West Lafayette, about a public safety local option income tax for monies that would go strictly to public safety items. And I've asked Doug and Bob to explain procedure and a little more about that for us.
You know, if you want to proceed with a public safety tax, in order to get it, make it effective, by January 1, the local income tax, I'm forgetting that. The Income Tax Council has to have completed action on it by October 31. And the way the process works is one of the taxing units introduces the ordinance, and then the others have to take action on it within 30 days with advertising and so forth. If you want to move forward with this, I think you'd probably have to be, you'd have to adopt a resolution at your September meeting, which in turns means we would have to get an advertisement in the paper in the next couple of weeks. So it sounds like from that discussion with, we had a, had a meeting of a couple people from each entity, and then I've had some brief exchanges. each entity, and then I've had some brief exchanges with the city attorneys, it sounds like the 0.18 rate is what people kind of have an appetite for. But, I mean, one of the tricky points is, once you advertise it, how much flexibility do you have? So I think we probably have to proceed with the idea that the rate we advertise is kind of what we're going with. We could advertise a couple of different ones, I suppose. Normally, I mean, normally what happens is, on some other things, is if you advertise high, you can go lower. You can probably do that here, but I just haven't seen any statutory authority. I am really skeptical of the idea that you could go any higher than what you advertise. And then on the number, I guess you can.
Now, I had, I sent out this PowerPoint, it's the same thing you received if you did happen to see that. But I'll go through this really quickly here for the public safety local income tax, the lit public safety. And this is, since we are a Coat County, there's Coat Counties and Cagito Counties. Coat Counties tend to be the larger counties that we have an income tax council decide. If you're a Cagito County, it is the County Council, but anyway. If you could happen to see this, this is a statute on what public safety is. A few things that I tried to underline as far as what would apply to us or even the cities, police and law enforcement systems, probation department, community corrections programs, county jail, emergency telephone system, medical and health expenses of jailed inmates, pension payments for us to be the sheriff pension, and law enforcement training. That is the Indiana Code definition of what public safety is. Then here is the statute on this. The allocations of county to each municipality in that county is carried with at least one public safety purpose. So anybody who did have the public safety purpose would receive that, which would be very similar to the number of people who receive eat at funds, which that is not, like townships, they do not receive public, or they do not receive eat at funds, it's just the cities and towns and the county. The income tax council, there is 100 votes of the income tax council based on population. And if you're not in the city in town, then that population is given to the county. That's how the council gets their votes. Each year, we have to, and we have done this each year, even though the income tax council rarely has a vote, we send out the votes to everybody. Here are the 100 votes. So the county has 33.74 votes. And you can obviously see that Lafayette, West Lafayette, and the county, two of those three can determine whatever we want to do. So the council could say, we want to have a lit public safety, and it could be turned down. We are not the deciding one, but we are one of the big three. And then we just got the local income tax council, da-da-da, it's not anything real. This is a resolution, I think Doug kind of gave me this at some point in time, some time back, but whoever goes first, anybody in the income tax council, it could be the town of Otterbon, could pass a resolution to say what they want to do with income tax. And if that passes, then the other bodies have to take action on that resolution. So it's a resolution first, and this, we just got some made up little dates and times is what we would, what we'd be doing. And we do have to advertise this resolution 10 days before. My understanding, and maybe Doug can correct me if I'm wrong, if the County Council would pass a resolution, we do not vote on an ordinance, or we're not required to vote on an ordinance. The resolution is what's casting our votes.
Yes, so at the same time, you're introducing the ordinance and casting your votes in favor.
So if we would go first, we're really done, and we can just see what the other people decide they want to do. And this would be sample ordinance of made up numbers here, or some of it's made up. And so what we have is, we are going to show the rates that we have, the certified shares, and these are unchanged, .5589 is the rate, economic development is .4, and property tax relief is .411. So that's homestead credit that we are creating, that adds up to 1.1%. And so then the thing where we'd be deciding, do we want to add the public safety and whatever rate? If we do want .18, that would be put in there where I've got my question marks there.
And Bob, from my understanding, the way it's written, we can only go two decimal points over, right? So like with public safety, you can only go to the .18, so you can't do .59.
Yeah, it seems a little odd that some of the others go out four decimal points, but somehow that was, there was some conversion, because ours used to be .6 and .4 and .1, and that kind of got reallocated along the way. But all the information I've received from the DLGF says we can go out two decimal points.
For the public safety?
For public safety, yes.
For public safety, yeah. So there's, so obviously the last, yeah.
And one other thing that I think we probably would not want to alter, but at the very bottom, the 1% allocation type for homestead eligible for credit under da-da-da, we can have property tax relief different ways. We can give it to all properties, we can give it to people with homesteads, which is what we've done, or we can give it to properties that are residential use, whether there's a homestead on it or not. And we have, we have gone, going back to our old Coat Homestead, we are using 100% of the .1411 rate to give property tax relief to people who have a homestead credit. And the rate, and we're talking at the whole lit rate under the number one there in the middle of the screen, we can have 2.5% total lit rate. We are at 1.1% now, so, you know, we could mathematically go to 1.4%, I believe, for a lit public safety, just so we cannot exceed the 2.5%. So we would still be well underneath what we could have as a total rate. And here is the effective dates. If we do get this approved by August 31st, it can start October of this year. Now, that is an impossibility, so we can cross that one off if we want to start that. So the next date that we really are aiming for is October the 31st, and that was, we have to have everything done, not just the first resolution. You have to have the ordinances passed, and I believe I have to have all the information back to the state by that time for the effective date. So that was when people would start paying on their, and their paychecks, you would be seeing that rate on January 1st of 2020. If you did it after October 1st before the end of the year, it would start October of next year. This is, I chopped out part of an email that I received from the DLGF Budget Director, and you can't read the little print, but Van Dorp County is, this came from Fred Van Dorp, and he's talking about, and some of it's the same table that I just said. And what seems unusual is, if this rate is going to start January 1st of 2020, we would, from the table two, we would start receiving distributions in January of 2020. But that is kind of what, we would like to get the distributions done as quick as we can, and that would be very quickly, because it would be the same day that it starts. Now, this is just an estimate, and I wasn't fully aware of the .18 when I put this together. And I am using the eat at numbers for 2019. We have received the 2020 eat at numbers now, which are a shade higher, but this gives some idea of how much money will we be generating? If we were .18, and you can see the Tiburon County line at the bottom there, we would be pretty close to $4 million when I use the 2020 eat at numbers. I'm just making that assumption, because it's the same people that would be receiving. The only ones I'm not sure of is Shadland, whether they'd be receiving any, since I'm not sure if they would classify of having any public safety expenses in their town budget. But that's not that much, anyway. But it would be generating, you know, over three and a half if we had the .18, we would be almost $4 million a year, is my just quick little estimate based on what we've had in eat at funds. One other little thing that, if we do have this, townships can request annually money for public safety for them to use for their reasons. And this will be voted on and every year. And we do have, obviously, the townships, most of them have fire rates, and so that is something that we can, we could consider, that they can request, they need to do that before July 1, and then before September 1. So if we do get this, I would almost expect us to have an income tax council meeting more than once every 10 or 12 years. And just, I just threw this in here as far as what are, what do we have, what are the townships paying for? The first columns there, that is for the general fire rates. So it is over $1 million for all the townships put together. And then they have other fire rates, we have Cume Fire and some things like that, that's another $800,000. So I think potentially, if we did give some of this money to townships, there could be some reduction in property taxes, because, I mean, my hope would be maybe some of the things that are paid for with property taxes could be paid for with this, if the income tax council was willing to give some of that money up. And that money does come off the top before the other distributions are made.
Yeah, go back to that. The townships that have zero in fire levies, that's not to say they, that the township doesn't pay, doesn't have expenses for fire.
Right, well, yeah, I should have explained, most of the ones, you get to Perry, Sheffield, Tippecanoe, Washington, those are zero, because they have kind of gone together to make a fire territory. You see right above the total general fire territory. So that is the fire for them put together. And I believe that Union Township, that is part of the town rate, not part of the township rate, but so.
So they're all covered in some way.
Yeah, and there are times, there could be times when a township could not have a fire rate for a year, based on how much money they have in their fire fund. So that does go, they do the same thing with poor relief. Everybody's poor relief, but there's times when there is no poor relief property tax rate. But there is, there is money that they are spending for public safety, but they are not statutorily given money. They need to request it each time. The impact, and this is one that I had done in using .1%, if you made $40,000 of income, if that was what you made, it would be about $36 for .1%. So you'd be talking somewhere, if we did .18, about $50 a year if you made $40,000. Obviously, that would be through the payroll deduction, so it would be spread over time. But there is obviously some impact, because this is a new income tax. Now, this is one you absolutely can't see, but if you could, what I tried to list here are all of the positions since 2017 that the council has either approved or the Commissioners did not approve. The red ones are the ones that the Commissioners did not approve for 2020 that were requested. But just in general, I think when I add this up since 2017, and the yeses tell me whether I think that that is public safety. And I've got 33 yeses that have, new positions have been created since 2017, and I think there are like 12 more that were not approved for 2020. So, I mean, there's, and are we not approving them because they're not needed? No. But we do obviously have some real need under the public safety side, and it's putting a lot of pressure for us to be able to maintain our cash balance and be able to give, you know, the public safety needs. And obviously, over the course of the last few weeks, you can see that we cannot be skimping on the public safety side in our budget just to make it balance. And the impacts, the potential impacts, the law enforcement on the street could be increased. We could have reduced property taxes a little bit if we would give the township some money and protect the non-law enforcement programs, because right now, we're putting, we need to add positions, they're public safety, so it makes it a little more difficult for the departments that are not public safety to be able to increase staff. And we still have a very, very low, if we did have a .1%, we would have the 71st highest out of 92 income tax rate in the state. And we do have other positions, and a new court's going to be coming online, so we do have some needs there. The benefits, this is paid by all citizens who work and not just property owners, not like property taxing, it is going to be coming to anyone. And it is a lower impact on fixed income citizens, because this is an income tax. So if you're Social Security only, this is not going to be affecting you that way. And it is paid over time, instead of like a property tax, it's paid twice a year, so you don't see quite the impact, because it's going to be on your check each time. What I consider the downside is businesses and industry would not pay this tax. This is a personal income tax, so, you know, your Caterpillars or Subarus of the world, they don't pay that, their employees all would, but them themselves, I don't believe that they would pay this tax at all.
Is there nothing we could do to help them share in the cost? Or are we pretty much?
It's an income tax, and so that's, it's a personal income tax, so.
Okay, so there's really not an option there?
Right, right. And, you know, when you kind of look at it, the public safety, they need public safety for their operations, but I would say, me talking, not knowing what I'm talking about, is that, you know, they're not going to have the need quite that the normal citizen would maybe that. One thing is non-county residents who work in Tiburon County, you know, if you live in Clinton County and you're working at Purdue, you do not pay the income tax to us, it's going to Clinton County. So that would be something that it is a little bit, we're not getting it from everybody that works in Tiburon County, and we probably have more people that drive to Tiburon County to work than leave Tiburon County to work. But there's always going to be some of that. And here's my cute little map here, that again, the, where you see the most of that, well, I will consider a tan color, that is .25%. The white is the no tax, and you can see us up there, and there are a number of us that are in that category with no tax. The blue is the over .6. The green, if we did it, that would be the lowest, and I've got that going up to .19. So we would still be in, even with the public safety tax, we would be in the lower quadrant of counties with the public service tax. And as we've just kind of mentioned this, that some of the counties that don't have it, they maybe also have riverboats, that they have other sources of revenue that we don't have. And one other just little thing that we could look at in the future is this, we can increase the income tax if we do have jail, and our jail is going to be paid off soon, but if we ever need to go ahead with another one, we can create another tax to pay for that, to take that off the property tax. This would be one that only the County Council would vote on. So obviously, that's the end of my little stories.
Your computer's decided you're done.
Well, yeah, it is the end of slideshow.
Story over. Questions for Bob?
So Bob, I was looking at your previous analysis of the top 10 largest counties, and it looks also like of the top 10 largest counties, about eight of them have adopted the public safety tax. And the ones who haven't, Hamilton, Porter, and I, sorry, seven of us have done it. And we were talking before, we thought that Porter might also be a riverboat as well. So a lot of the larger counties as well have also adopted the public safety tax, just additional.
And I think Hamilton is probably one of those of the doughnut counties that, I think that they get more tax in on the income tax side than what a normal county would, you know, the ones that surround Marion County. I think it went back to the RCA Dome tax.
That's the sales tax.
Oh, okay.
They have an extra percent on their sales tax.
But they are getting that, I know from Henders County, they are making money on that. They're getting some money that way, too.
On Amazon, eh?
Yeah, I don't know.
So also, in comparison to kind of 92 counties, a lot of them are very rural, but compared to our peers as well, a lot of them have also adopted this tax.
But it really comes down to what are our needs, and our needs are growing, and the growing part of our needs are really under the public safety side of it. And that's obviously something that we need to be concerned about when you see the world events, and we need to be prepared for that, and we can't want to be shorting them. But it's also, we don't want to short the other counties or the other departments in county government that have needs. And obviously, we're not the only ones, the cities have the same public safety needs and overall needs.
So this is just a procedure. So this is just a, a procedure, I guess, question and comment. I understand that there have been a few meetings with members of some of the different bodies that are part of this group have met. I assume that the, maybe the commissioners have been involved with this as well in meetings. But the, the question is, there's, there's no question, it's documented as now going through, you know, the 2020 budgets, as we've been reviewing with our departments and even the departments that I don't have regarding public safety. You know, the prosecutor, the, the sheriff, I mean, we see this growing need, and then we see this growing budget, and we see a growing dollars that we have to cut. But my concern is, we're having this discussion just kind of amongst ourselves, but how are we letting the public know? Because all of a sudden, you're going to see on the front page of the paper, you know, county council passes a resolution to increase income tax by X number. And it's like, whoa, what did I miss? So how are we proposing to let the public know? To have public hearings, to, you know, show what we just saw? And not just at 8:00 in the morning, but I think we need to do something in the evening time as well.
And I definitely concur with Kathy. I mean, I've been talking to people as I'm in the community, and nobody, nobody understands what's going on around this issue. Like, if I talk to the average person on the street, they're not aware of all the needs that we have. So I would really love to understand the process that we're going to have to, to talk to the public.
And obviously, we, we do have to, we're required to law, by law, to put a notice in the newspaper. And hopefully, the notice in the newspaper is not just a little legal ad for a newspaper that people don't seem to read anymore, but that would be picked up by the media to, you know, that's the only way we can notify people is basically through the media. And this would be a little bit bigger story that, that hopefully, we could get some coverage. And, yeah, we, if we're going to put an ad in the paper, we just need to really have a date. And this isn't something we could set by, you know, we can't go much beyond next meeting or around next meeting time. Doesn't have to be on the meeting date if you want a special meeting. But we need to get moving on it for us to get all the parts done if we want it to start January 1st.
This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube, so that's another way we can get it out to other people.
Thank you.
To, to have, go ahead.
So you're telling, we can't have some nighttime public hearings and talk about what's going on in the-
We can, we just need to know it so that we put it in the ad in the newspaper.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, the ad will be for the date you actually vote on it. So if you want to do it before that-
Yeah, that's true.
Then, I mean, you don't necessarily need to advertise, you don't need like an official legal ad to have your public hearings. You can have a special meeting with, what, 48 hours' notice? And just ask, the newspapers will be happy to talk about taxes that sells papers and things, so.
And I think there's a real opportunity-
Right, so the ads for the public hearing, but, but if you want sort of just a series of other kinds of meetings, you don't have to put that in the paper. It's the paper that creates a lot of lag time, because you have to have, it has to be in the paper 10 days before the actual resolution is introduced. And it has to, and to get that in 10 days before, I forget, it's probably another 10 days before that that you have to tell the fish if you want it. So it's one day at a time. So for that piece of it, I mean, you don't want to get too creative, but there's nothing stopping you from having special meetings or, you know, even if it's not the whole body, just, you know, listening sessions or something. I don't know which one to do.
And, and I, I think there needs to be some sort of education, because, you know, as you, you hear income taxes, well, you know, the person that's on a fixed income with just social security, they don't understand that this isn't going to impact me as well. I mean, just, it's got to be the education component, and we have to listen, to hear, and educate the public on if we're going to do some kind of, you know, income tax, which, you know, it's documented. You can see the need, but how do we educate and make the public part of the process?
I would suggest, so, I mean, the way I saw the calendar moving, if you wanted to do this, is you've got your, your next sort of regular meeting, September 10th, right? And so between now and then, you have several days of budget hearings where clearly you have other things going on, but you can talk to people then. That's a time when those needs will be right in front of you. Maybe that's an educational opportunity. And then you do have the night meeting, September-
September 5th.
5th.
We can still get that one in, right? We can still do the ad to have-
Right.
September 5th, 6 o'clock.
Yep.
Well, and so I, I mean, I guess my only concern about, you can talk to the public and, and have input and all of that on the 5th. I might caution against trying to have the resolution on the 5th, simply because the cities have to go within 30 days, and their meetings, I think, October 7th. So if you, all I'm saying is, if you introduce the ordinance on September 5th, and then their next regular meeting is October 7th, you might put that in the line.
But we could have the public hearing and not vote on it. That, and I think we need to get that to the newspaper in the next couple of days.
If you want to put the actual hearing on the 5th, I don't know if it matters if you have it on the 5th or the 10th. The 5th could be another educational opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, we could have two.
And I think whatever, whenever we're educating to, we should invite the departments that are affected, the public safety departments, to also explain what, what kind of opportunities this gives them to do their work in addition to just the growing budget, but also, you know, what, what does this allow together all of our public safety departments to do, right? I think that's something that we can, we can certainly make the fiscal part of this. That's what the county council is supposed to do, is make the fiscal argument for things. But I think there's also a services argument as well that I think we could, if we invite our, our, you know, the, the law enforcement and the fire departments to explain why they, why they also would benefit, since it's, it's a public safety tax. And I think we really do believe that it's going to go towards, we're not playing a shell game here, it really is going towards public safety and, and kind of what that looks like as well for those kind of transparency educational moments. We can make the fiscal argument very well, but I think we have to make the value argument at the same time.
Well, given our history with our budget public hearing on September 5th, that meeting is fast and furious and not extremely well-attended. That may be a perfect time to do this, advertise it as this, because our budget part of it is relatively simple and not real time-consuming. So we could do that and then roll into this.
Do we have this reviewed yet?
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah.
I think what we're, what we're trying to say is, I, I think when I looked at the, the actual calendar, if we were going to get this started for this year, and it seems like it's always going to happen during budget hearings, because we always want to make that October date, because that's the most, the most advantageous in terms of our budgets. I think if it's, if it's going to happen, we would have to do it by, we would do it in our September 10th meeting, or we would-
Right. Well, if we were to do it on the 5th, that's 32 days, so that's not within the windows of the cities.
No, no, I was saying, like, yeah, like, I think that if we, if we're, yeah, the September 10th is really the best-
That's the optimum time.
Is the optimal time if we're going to do it this year. Otherwise, we're gonna, so, I mean, in some ways, I think that I'm not really getting a, a good feeling on everyone else on the council in terms of whether people want to, want to, want to, you know, hurry towards that deadline or, or wait another year. But it does affect the way we do budget hearings, right? If we expect additional income.
When's it going to stop? Taxes, just keep taxing. When's it going to stop? General public, they, they don't understand it, just like she said.
That, that's true. It's, but, you know, we have a new court coming online, and that's something we have to deal with next year. And we have, obviously have the personnel needs and other needs within the, within those departments that are, have been proposed and will deal with, you know, in a few weeks, or we're dealing with now as we meet with departments. I don't know. Where's it going to stop? That's the philosophical question, way beyond all of our pay grade. So what are your wishes?
Do what?
Well, so you're proposing that we have a public hearing, or on the September 5th, we talk about this and invite the public to come and hear about, to educate them at the September 5th meeting? I'm a little confused what we're-
Yes.
Is there a reason we want to wait until September 5th and we don't want to do it sooner? We only have to give, I mean, not that I want to give 48 hours, but we could do a, do one sooner, right?
We need more than 48, we have to have, it has to be in the newspaper 10 days before your hearing.
Only if it's a, well, if we have an educational meeting, we're not voting.
Not just to talk about it, you could do that.
Take official action on it.
I, I don't know why you would not want to have a public hearing, and to not have the official public hearing. If you're going to go that far, why not just have the public hearing? And it's, a public hearing doesn't necessarily have to be educating people, you want to hear what the people have to say.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, we may want to do it earlier and get their, get feedback before we even go into budget hearings at the end of the month.
Well, even though this, well, maybe it's a question rather than a statement, how do, how will this affect what we do now for the 2020 budget?
It, it really can't because it can't be enacted so that we know it's going to start in. And we still don't even know the numbers of how much, my estimate could be way off, and I still have a little uneasiness of, of a tax starting January 1st and distribution starting in January. They're either going to give us a reduced amount, or I don't know that they're really going to be fronting us the money.
So effectively, any monies that we might collect in 2020, we, we could use for additional appropriations, and then a year from now, as it comes around from budget, we might have an estimate to where it goes.
You could obviously-
That's going to be the case if we do it now or if we delay it. We're still not going to know in that first year really what the income, what it produces. And even though we're collecting it January 1st, we can't-
Right.
Decide in September how we're going to spend it. So it's really not going to affect the budget documents that we do in September.
For 2020, so we're not actually going to do anything until 2021? I'm, I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Well, I'm saying any monies that we would collect in 2020, that's cash on hand, we could do additional appropriation-
Through the year.
Throughout the year.
Okay.
And then by the budget time next year, we'll have some handle on-
Okay, okay, I follow you.
On money that we can actually budget.
Right. And some of those positions that weren't created for law enforcement could be created, and you could do one or two versus, you know, the whole numbers.
Right, they could be created mid-year sometimes.
Right, right.
So it, it gives us flexibility into next year for those public safety departments.
So we'll have to have the hard discussion on October, we're going to do the budget at the end of the month, assuming we don't have this kind of money. And then if we do pass it, then we'll be able to ease up on some of those cuts.
We can't assume that it will pass this group, we can't assume that it will pass at least one of the two city councils.
Right.
Fair enough.
So, no, it will not affect this budget.
Okay.
So-
I don't think I necessarily need a motion, but I can proceed with getting the advertisement together for September 10th unless somebody tells me to do something other, different, or-
I would support getting this stuff together. I don't know if that's a motion, but, or a personal support, but, yeah, I think, I think, I think we should, we should have a conversation and, and advertise it, you know, to our constituents that we're, I mean, obviously, we've been having this conversation all year through sustainability studies and other things, but I think it's time to maybe invite some other, some other, some views in terms of, well, is this the way we want to go in terms of, in terms of, and making sure that people understand what, what pressures the county is under with the new court and these new positions and the sort of overall growth. I think maybe now is a good time to have that engagement.
But I also think that if it is going to be on our agenda on the 10th, that when we have our budget meeting on September 5th, that we also let the public know, because that's an evening meeting at 6 o'clock, whereas, you know, we've gone through the budget, these are positions that we are not able to fund in regards to public safety for 2020. And this is a tool that the council has with the other entities in the county that we could do and educate people on what this actually would mean. So if I'm making $40,000 a year, I'm going to pay and it could pay a potential an extra $50 a year, but where's that money going to? We are, you know, it's only for public safety. I mean, I think we need, and then have a public hea, you know, a public hearing, educate and listen. And then we can do the same thing on our meeting on the 10th, because that will be during the end. But that will give the public an op, you know, an opportunity to hear and to let the council know how they feel.
And I, I agree. And then additionally, I would, I would also strongly suggest that whenever the, the cities vote on it, which is kind of the other large player in this, that maybe we all have a, I would be in support of a joint meeting so that we can kind of make, not just our argument to the cities, they're making their argument to their constituents, but I think they're, they are our constituents as well, so making sure that they understand the conversations that have been happening at the county level. So when the, when the city councils vote, maybe, maybe we should have a joint meeting to discuss, you know, this is why we're bringing this forward, this is why it's important at the county level, and this is how it relates to the city level. But that, they would have to, yeah, we'd have to see if they, if they would want to do a joint evening meeting.
Well, and, and what is their procedure? They may also want an informational meeting and/or public hearing on their own.
But yeah, and I think we should, we should be present with those as well, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, after, after we vote, it's, I don't think it's, it's not the end of the conversation in any way.
Oh, no. So shall we move forward with, for a public hearing for the county level, September 5th in the evening with the, is it an ordinance or resolution?
Well, so I've been hearing two different things. I mean, I think personally, the better way to go is have the resolution actually introduced and have the public hearing September 10th, but have a public hearing September-
Informationally.
Yes, yeah.
That's exactly what I mean.
Yep, that's what, yeah.
April, be September 10th, but you want to get the word out that you're inviting the public to come here and comment on the 5th as well.
That this is going to be introduced on the 10th, and so you, if you don't have the opportunity to come at 8:30 in the morning on the 10th, that we will be available on the 5th at 6 o'clock at night.
So we're doing it twice, which is fine, because it's two time periods.
But that is an official meeting that we need to advertise that for the informational?
It's just, I mean-
No decisions will be made.
We were going to advertise we're having an evening meeting, we already got, like that.
Well, we're going to have, we have an official meeting anyway.
You're not going to take any formal action on the 5th, so you don't need to advertise anything official other than that you're having it, because you're doing-
We're going to have an ad anyway because we're doing the budget meeting, so.
But that's the one ad that doesn't go in the newspaper, that just goes on Gateway. That it just goes on the website.
Yeah, you're-
All the budget stuff just, does not go in the newspaper, it goes on, on the website, on the Gateway website.
But you're, you're fine to talk about it on the 5th, just don't take any action on it.
Right.
That consensus with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone's fine?
Mm-hmm.
Make it so.
Bob, thank you for, for this.
Yeah, yeah.
This is great, thank you. Thanks, Doug, for your help.
This would be good for the 5th.
All right. Anything else for the greater good at the moment from this group?
What commissioners have to say?
Oh, wait, we're still in a-
I know, I know, but I'm not adjourning. Before we invite Tom, anything else from us?
Are you leaving, passion? See ya.
Well, thank you so much.
I have a question. Can you, I, I know in the intervening month since we all last met, the commissioners approved the nine new positions. Can you, and I know it went through Personnel Committee as well, I'd like to know a little bit about the process for what positions were included and what the overall strategy was in terms of which positions were selected. I know it wasn't just the commissioners, but I know it was at the commissioners' meeting, so.
Exactly. So basically, that, you know, that, are you on Personnel?
I'm not.
Okay, so basically, it goes through the Personnel Committee, and that's after, with, reviews it if it's a new position. And then the Personnel Committee makes a recommendation, and those that came out of the Personnel Committee, then were all reviewed by us. I think there were 20-
29.
29. 29 positions that had been requested, and then we analyzed those and reviewed those, and obviously, we considered budget constraints, and then approved the ones that we thought, thought, in our opinions, were the most needed. For example, the prosecutor had a number of positions in there that will be needed for the new court, but they won't be needed for next year. We, in our opinion, they weren't going to be needed for next year, so those were not approved, but will have to be approved in the next budget, so.
Okay, so some of the positions from the prosecutor's office, they're sort of a deferred, because it seemed like there was approved and not approved, but there might be some deferred positions? deferred positions as well?
Exactly.
That are, are to be included in the next budget?
Not approved for this year.
That could particularly be reconsidered for the following year budget.
Can you remind us who the, who was on the Personnel Committee?
I'm on the Personnel Committee.
Oh, I, I'm on it. Kevin, Bob, Shirley, and David Byers.
Okay, okay.
Auditor of the HR Director one, I think, and two of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
May I answer your question?
Yeah, and I think I'd make like a, just a general comment that in terms of what positions we're including or thinking about, that, you know, as we're doing this process, that something should be kind of more public about that, that people could interface with. I know that you guys are looking at the needs of the different departments and the needs of the county overall, but I think I, I would have expected some sort of, like, this is where we're going in terms of it, and this is, this is the way in which we think that we should spend our money this year. This is, because it sounds like there is, behind that, there's the, the skeleton of a plan in terms of, okay, we're, we're, next year is about, is going to be definitely about the court, and we know we'll have those needs, but we're dealing with these immediate needs we have in the, for example, in the jail or elsewhere. But I think just, if there's some way, we can make that a little bit clearer, because I, I didn't see, that's just a, a general wish list, I guess.
Yeah, should that be in the reports from the committees that we have?
Yeah, maybe committee reports, maybe a report from the Personnel Committee in terms of what they're thinking about around this time every year about.
Some things are personnel issues that are not real public, so.
Yeah, but I mean, what, what can be shared in terms of that? Yeah.
No, I'm just saying, you know, like, every month, we have like reports from committees, and, and John always gives his update on the Romney sewer, which I appreciate, maybe that's what we need to get. And I know I didn't do, I'm trying to do the APC more since I'm the lone person.
And the Personnel Committee doesn't meet every month. It's pretty much as needed as we, you know, reclassifications come through, or if we're creating new positions, that comes through. But point well taken, and Kevin and I will report back to this body when we do meet. But you do see those come through, because the, generally, they have to be approved by the council, because there's some funding attached to the change of classification.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, thank you.
As seen by, you know, Kerry Home and the prosecutor, the ones that went through on last time.
Right, so to have reported today, you would have been saying, well, we did those things that we already.
Correct, correct. It's come before the council.
Yeah, and I think, I think, yeah, we see actions that the Personnel Committee takes, but we don't really see the thought process of, of it, and we hear it at a, at a department by department area, but maybe just, yeah, the Personnel Committee could.
Well, we do when there's a, when there's a, we do when there's a salary change, like we did.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But you're thinking about the overall number of staffing for next year.
Yeah, since that's the biggest part of our budget, I think just being intentional about what, what changes we're seeing at a, less like on the ground and more the 10,000 foot level, right? In terms of, because since that is the, the highest growth area of our budget, and we were just talking about public safety tax, and one of the biggest reasons for, well, for growth is, is personnel, right? So, cool, thank you. I think we're all in agreement there.
And we did get some feedback from council members in regard to those positions, so we greatly appreciate that and encourage that, you know, as well. Because obviously, as you're talking to your departments, you know, as liaisons, you know, that feedback as we're looking at those future positions is very, very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, is there any, anyone else?
No.
Karen.
Thank you, good morning. I just want to give a quick update on the fair time. So in the past four years that I've been a part of the county fair, I'd have to say this one has been the best so far, and I hope that they continue to get even better. We did have incredible weather, except for the one day of thunderstorms, but we made it through, and I just wanted to thank Andy Klein for helping us make that, that fair run smoothly, and of course, the few hundred 4-H volunteers that make it possible. So now it's, we're moving on past fair, we can start thinking of other things. We do have the Crops Field Day coming up, that's our annual event at the Agronomy Farm, which is on Thursday, September 5th. Will be held at the Beck Center at the Agronomy Farm, and we're going to begin the morning at 8:00 AM with a hearing from Jason Henderson, who is the Extension Director, State Director. And we have a little bit of different things going on. Last year, we tried to mix things up and had a lot of technology involved. This year, we're going to be looking back into the past, because we're celebrating 70 years at the Agronomy Farm and 150 years that Purdue University has been here. So we're going to be celebrating our history, but also looking into the future, and we'll be talking about hemp production, which will be new for the Crops Field Day, as well as the crop diseases and unmanned aerial vehicles. We will finish the day off, we're hearing from some specialists throughout the last 70 years. We're welcoming back some people to discuss all the different changes and agronomic progress that we've made over the last 70 or 150 years. So I hope that you'll be able to join us in my rush this morning to get the kids to their first day of school. I didn't bring the flyers, so I will make sure those get into your mailboxes. But thank you for the support through the fair, and, and I hope to see you at the Crops Field Day. And also, with all this talk about educating the public, if there's anything that Purdue Extension can do to help get the word out about these income tax increases, or help with education, or promotion, however I can help, please let me know. Thank you.
Can you remind me, when is the, when is the crop day?
It is Thursday, September 5th.
Okay.
And it'll start at 8:00, yeah, so.
Long day.
Long day, if you, if you, if you do make it.
And it's at the fairgrounds.
It is at the Agronomy Farm, which is on 52, the Beck Ag Center, West Lafayette. So I will send, I will make sure the flyers get put in your mailboxes, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on anything discussed today or in the future?
The ground crack.
Seeing done. Move we adjourn?